Councilmember Tyson, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is appreciative to have Dr. Moses, who's a senior pastor of Ethiopian Orthodox Church. Dr. Moses, yes, come forward.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect the community of Columbus. Almighty Lord, we are most grateful that you promise us that where two or three are gathered, you are there in the midst. Lord, we welcome you amongst us today and celebrate the gift of life that you have lavished upon each of us. We ask that you would open our ears so that we may hear your voice. Open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom. Open our spirits so that we may know your leading and guidance. And open our hearts so that we may receive your wonderful love and continue to remind us that all that we do here today and every day, all that we accomplish is for the greatest glory of you and for the service of humanity. God, as we begin this session, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting today. We ask all of these in your mighty name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Moses. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there resolutions by members of councils, starting with President Protem?
Thank you, Council President Harden. If I could ask Dr. Moses to approach the podium again. I have Resolution 0265X-2019 to recognize the Ethiopian Community Celebration of Mascal being held in Columbus on September 27, 2019. Columbus is a growing and vibrant city, and we are so thankful for the contributions from all of the diverse communities that call our city home. Tonight, I'm pleased to recognize Dr. Moses. As we know, you are the senior pastor of the Ethiopian Orthodox Church here in Columbus, and thank you for giving our opening prayer. And thank you for being here to help us recognize the Mascal celebration happening in Columbus this Friday. Mascal is an annual holiday in the Ethiopian Orthodox Church, which has been celebrated in Ethiopia for more than 1,700 years. The celebration has come to represent an important cultural and national celebration for Ethiopians throughout the world, including right here in our city of Columbus. The local celebration of Mascal contributes to the cultural vibrancy of our city and bolsters our proud history of welcoming all people into the community, no matter where they are born. Dr. Moses, thank you for your work recognizing Mascal locally, and please share more about this celebration and your event on Friday before we adopt the resolution.
Thank you. This celebration had begun 1,700 years ago in Ethiopia as a religious celebration. But over the course of 1,700 years, it had become now all-inclusive national holiday, culturally celebrated by all. So why are we celebrating this? How it began, the history is... Almighty God, Jesus was crucified on this cross 2,000 years ago, as you all know. And the holy cross that he was crucified at was buried in a ground because anybody that came in contact to touching it, you know, anybody that was sick was healed, blind was given light, anybody. So the people who crucified Jesus at the time were not happy about it. So they said, you know, we killed this guy named Jesus, but the wood that was killed at is healing people and bringing people together. So they made a decision, conscious decision, to bury it on the ground. But fast forward 300 years afterwards, King Constantine and his mother, Queen Helena, decided to dig it. So they started digging this March 10, and they were able to find it this Friday, September 27. So you see, this is a cultural holiday, of course, but this shouldn't be just Ethiopian. It should be all of us here. So I'm asking here to, one, to help us recognize this holiday as a holiday, but also I would like you to share this holiday as your own. We have 40,000 Ethiopian community here in Columbus area, and we have seven churches in this area as well. You see, we don't make too much noises, very hardworking community. We stay on the ground, but there's a large and continue to also grow community here in Columbus, and we would like you to recognize that. Thank you so much for having me today.
Thank you. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I move for official adoption of this resolution.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Mitch Brown. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dorans.
Thank you, President Harden. No resolutions this evening. Just wanted to remind folks of my community hours that are happening this Thursday on September 25 from noon to 1:30 at the Livingston branch of the Columbus Metropolitan Library. We will be featuring an Eastside favorite, Robinos Pizza. So if folks are available and want to share something with me or my office, feel free to come out on Thursday.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, favor.
Thank you, President Harden. No official resolution today. However, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge a young lady in our community. Last week, our community experienced the tragic loss of 11-year-old Elizabeth Robertson Rutland, who was killed while attempting to get to her bus stop. Our deepest sympathies go out to her family, friends, and all that knew her. The loss of a child is never easy, and we extend our sincere prayers to her entire community. While the city is continuing to invest in safety infrastructures like sidewalks, we have a responsibility to continue to do more to protect our children and all of our residents. I ask that we all be more cautious in practicing safe driving habits and that we work together to create more solutions to ensure a tragedy like this does not occur again. Would you all please join me in a brief moment of silence? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I just wanted to announce on behalf of Director Brandon and the City of Columbus, the 2019 Combined Charitable Campaign. This is the City of Columbus's 28th Combined Charitable Campaign, and to date, the City of Columbus employees have contributed over $5.3 million through the Combined Charitable Campaign to support charitable organizations right here in our community. The 2019 campaign kicks off on Tuesday, October 1, and runs through November 8. This year's campaign goal is 206,000, and it should be easier than ever to reach this goal because the city is adding an e-Pledge option, an online pledging option for employees who prefer to donate electronically. Hard copies are still available for employees who wish to make cash or check donations. City employees will receive an email from United Way tomorrow and more information about this year's campaign as well as the e-Pledge option. There are 158 local agencies listed in this year's guide. Employees may also choose an agency of their choice to contribute to. You don't have, if you don't have a lot to give, to make a big, I'm sorry, you don't have to give a lot to make a big difference. $4 a month will provide 10 weeks of lunches for a homeless person, buy 25 bags of groceries for low-income families, provide diabetes risk tests for 500 individuals. Please join us in supporting the City of Columbus tradition and help us reach our goal. And I'd also like to announce that we will also have community hours this week on Thursday, the 26th, from 3:00 to 4:30 at 3623 South High Street. Another Tim Hortons special. So thank you so much, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. I have two resolutions, and the first resolution is 0271X-2019, and I am going to ask Ernest Perry, Casey Sleve, and Nick Stanich to, I'll come to the podium. I don't know if Jalissa wants to come up too, but this resolution is to recognize and to celebrate Mr. Nick Stanich on being selected as a September of 2019 Local Food Action Plan Local Food Champion by the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Board and the Franklin County Local Food Council. Whereas the Local Food Champion's work embodies one or each of the goals outlined in the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Plan with goals A, B, C, and D, which include enhancing the coordination and communication amongst existing food resources and agencies, improving access to and education about healthy food, affordable food, and local food, and increasing the role of food in economic development and preventing food waste. And whereas the City of Columbus and the Franklin County Local Food Board was established to oversee, prioritize, and guide implementation activities of the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan, and whereas the Franklin County Local Food Action Council is an independent advisory council that brings together people from across the food systems, from growers to eaters with particular interests in people and neighborhoods most affected by the food system policies and programs. Whereas the Local Food Action Champion Award recognizes and celebrates grassroots community efforts that support the Columbus-Franklin County Local Food Action Plan's vision of a fair, sustainable food system that benefits our local economy, the environment, and each of the residents in our community. Whereas the City of Columbus and the Franklin County Local Food Board and the Franklin County Local Food Council recognizes Mr. Nick Stanich as the winner of the September 2019 Local Food Champion Award as his work embodies the goals outlined in the Local Food Action Plan. Nick's leadership at Franklinton Farms has expanded the footprint and the scope of the farm. He's increased the amount of produce grown and distributed, and overseeing the development of a robust educational infrastructure for the people in the neighborhood. This includes a neighborhood CSA designed especially to be affordable for low-income families. These efforts exemplify the grassroots objectives of Goal B of the Local Food Action Plan. Whereas Nick's achievements were honored during a special celebration of the Franklin County Local Food Council on Wednesday, the September 18, at Columbus Public Health. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council is hereby recognized and celebrate Mr. Nick Stanich on being selected as a September 2019 Local Food Action Plan Local Food Champion by the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Board and the Franklin County Local Food Council. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. I am the chair of the Franklin County Local Food Action Board is here, and I want to recognize Mr. Ernest Perry.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Council President Harden, other members of council. It's a great honor to be here this evening to celebrate Nick Stanich and his work with Franklinton Farms. I'm standing here representing my colleagues on the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Board, and we are excited to have another food champion in this community. Nick's leadership of Franklinton Farms has improved access to and education about healthy food, local food, and affordable food in one of our city's great neighborhoods. He has expanded Franklinton Farms to grow and distribute more produce and leverages growth as infrastructure for food-related education for people in Franklinton. This includes a neighborhood-designated CSA for the neighborhood's lowest-income residents. The Local Food Plan is a roadmap for how, together, community leadership and grassroots activism can strengthen the overall food system for everyone. Nick's work certainly embodies a spirit of collective action guiding this plan and our work as a food board and a community. Thank you for recognizing Nick's work.
Casey.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Casey Sleve. I work at the Mount Carmel Healthy Living Center, and I am a member of the Franklin County Local Food Council. One of the roles of the Franklin County Local Food Council is to recognize and bring attention to the important grassroots food system work taking place in Franklin County through the Local Food Champion Award. I am honored to introduce Nick Stanich, the Executive Director of Franklinton Farms, who is extremely deserving of this award. Nick has worked diligently to develop Franklinton Farms into a multi-acre operation distributing a significant amount of affordable, fresh food in the Franklinton community, a neighborhood which lacks healthy food access. Nick's leadership with Franklinton Farms has successfully improved access and education about healthy, affordable, and local food in the Franklinton community. I am pleased to present Nick Stanich.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Ernest. Thank you, Jalissa. Thanks, Columbus City Council, and especially thanks to you, Councilmember Tyson, for supporting and advocating for community food system development here in Columbus. Franklinton Farms and other organizations that include Highland Youth Garden, Forest Seasons City Farm, Franklin Park Conservatory, Mid-Ohio Food Bank, and Local Matters have all been building community food systems here in Columbus since at least 2007. But it's really just in the last few years, with the help of the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan, that our grassroots efforts have been able to inspire substantial collaborative support across all city departments, philanthropic institutions, and local businesses to ensure our civic agriculture work is sustainable and integrated into the fabric of Columbus. We've really only just started to showcase that urban farming within and for our neighborhoods is both economically viable and civically enriching. And in a time of justified alarmism around inner-city health crises and climate change, there isn't a better time to advocate for and support the transformation of our urban landscapes into those of nourishing and ecologically sustainable foodscapes. Thank you for this award and look forward to the work to come.
Thank you, Nick. I also just want to mention that the local food team that we, in the City of Columbus and Franklin County, we have worked with Nick and to secure long-term leases for his land bank properties, purchase a land bank site for packing and cold storage, and lastly, looking for solutions to personnel expenses necessary to carry out the work of a growing site. And we just really appreciate his insight and his advocacy in making that happen. So thank you. And Nick will be leaving Franklinton Farms at the end of the year. We're all pretty sad about that, but we wish him well on his next, I hope, stay connected to the food and to growing, but we look forward to his next opportunity. And we'll be looking in the process, looking for a new executive director for Franklinton Farms. So thank you so much for your leadership, Nick. My next resolution is 272X-2019, and I'm going to ask Mr. David Royer to walk toward the podium, please. This resolution is to recognize September as the National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month and to thank Mr. David Royer for his 40 years of leadership and support for people and families in Columbus and Central Ohio in a quest to restore their lives. Whereas National Recovery Month was started in 1990 as a national observance held each September to educate Americans regarding substance use, treatment, mental health services, and help for people seeking to overcome these disorders in pursuit of living a healthy and rewarding life. National Recovery Month recognizes that behavioral health is an essential part of health and wellness. Opioid overdoses are now killing more people now than AIDS did when it was at the pinnacle of its pinnacle. More than nine out of 10 poisonings require hospitalizations in Ohio are due to drugs. Last year, 1.3 million Americans needed to be hospitalized for opioid-related issues. Whereas Mr. David Royer began his career and commitment to the field of behavioral health as a social worker in July of 1979. Serving as the Executive Director of the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board of Butler County from September of 1990 to May of 2000, he joined the Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board of Franklin County as CEO in 2000. Under his leadership, Adam H. Board of Franklin County created Franklin County Opioid Plan to Combat Opioid Epidemic. The organization partnered with Mary Haven to create the Addiction Stabilization Center, an innovative facility where people who have overdosed can be taken by EMS for immediate addiction treatment services. The board established a community housing network, a housing agency for people with long-term mental health conditions who are able to live independently in the community with supportive services. It is now an independent nonprofit. He established the Peer Center, a consumer-operated drop-in program for individuals living with mental illness and/or alcohol or other drug addiction, also now an independent nonprofit. He partnered with Nationwide Insurance to create the Ohio Opioid Education Alliance. As you know, it has denial Ohio, a successful partnership, successful public-private partnership focused on county and statewide campaign to raise awareness about opioids. He's participated in the process of breaking down and reducing the stigmas associated with mental illness, reversing the trend of deinstitutionalization, which was the norm when he first started his career. Whereas September of 2019 commemorates the 30th anniversary of the National Recovery Month, marking three decades of spreading the message that treatment is effective, recognizing that people can and do recover every day. The 2019 Recovery Month theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery, Together We Are Stronger", emphasizes the need to share resources and share resources, build networks across the country to support the many paths of recovery, reminding us that the mental and substance use disorders affect all of us and that we are all a part of the solution. Moreover, David's career of service and excellence highlights the Recovery Month, what Recovery Month is all about. It's about helping and inspiring people from all walks of life to find the path to hope, health, and wellness. We celebrate David, and we thank him for his service to this community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council is hereby recognized September as the National Alcohol, Drug, Addiction Recovery Month, and thank Mr. David Royer for his 40 years of leaderships and service and support for people and families in Columbus and Central Ohio in their quest to restore their lives. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. I also just want to mention that for those who may not be familiar with Adam H., that they certainly are a significant funder of the mental health and addiction services in this community. And there probably isn't a program in this community that is working with that particular population that has not been funded by your work. And again, David, I'm going to wish you real well as you leave this 40-year career and take some time for you and your family to do what's next. Forty years is a long time to do this work, and so we really do thank you for your commitment to our community. Are there any other comments from any of my councilmembers? All right, David. Seeing none, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, President Harden, and members of council. If I knew it was going to go this fast, I would have slowed down. But when you do something you love and you care about every day, the time seems to just travel very quickly. Our premise has been very simple, and I hope it's a premise that we all embrace, and that's that every person matters regardless of disability, income, social status, economic class, especially folks with disabilities, for me at least. It's a very difficult road when you have a severe and persistent mental illness to fulfill your dreams as we dream of our dreams. And so the premise has always been very clear to me that our job as a community is to try to provide them with a standard of life that reflects the very best of what this community reflects, and that's a very high quality of life. We couldn't do it without our partners here at City Council and the City of Columbus. We've had an effective and long-lasting partnership, and I believe very much that partnership will go on for many years to come. So on behalf of our board, we want to thank you, the City of Columbus, for all that you do for us. And most importantly, just on a personal level, I want to thank all of you for supporting something that truly matters, and that's the quality of life of every citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Service is definitely something that we should recognize around here, and so 40 years of service is very commendable. I also want to recognize someone's service, and so I have a resolution that I want to read from the floor. It's Resolution 0269X-2019, and it's to commend and thank Stephen R. Shoney for his outstanding service to the City of Columbus. And so, Director, since Director Shoney started in 2013, the Department of Development has partnered with the private sector to create approximately 18,000 jobs, more than 3,000 units of affordable housing, and sold a total of 1,400 land bank properties, including 775 formerly blighted structures for renovation. Under Steve's leadership, the City of Columbus and his partners have managed to save the crew, rewrite our incentive playbook to encourage affordable housing and good-paying jobs, ensure the long-term stability of the North Market, push Columbus towards 10,000 downtown residents, and reinvigorated our urban core. Director Shoney was always honest and forthright, and because of those qualities, he's a trusted advisor to all branches of city government as well as our external partners. And while Director Shoney will be missed by many here at the city, he will continue his career in public service as city manager for Upper Arlington, where he lives with his wife, Holly, and their two sons. Before I present the resolution, I know that my colleagues, well, some of my colleagues would like to say a few words, and so would anybody like to? Councilmember. would like to say a few words, and so, would anybody like to, uh, council member?
Director Shoney. I first met Director Shoney as my boss, and that's why when I came to council, he made sure that I had a seat where he could avoid direct eye contact. The podium is always blocking, always blocking Steve's face. But I am so grateful for the work you've done for our city, and President Harden rattled off some impressive statistics. More than those statistics, though, is, you know, what really, what I felt working for you, which is a deep commitment to building a city that you're proud to leave behind to your children. I, I really felt that as an employee in the Department of Development, and I've felt that as a member of council, too. That is a quality that can't be created. It is innate, and it's a quality that's hard to replace, so I know there are going to be very big footsteps to fill. I also want to thank your family for your service because I know that your commitment required not obviously just the long hours on Monday nights, but much more beyond that. So I'm really grateful to know you, Steve, really grateful to have worked for you and to have worked with you, and you better not be a stranger over there in Upper Arlington. Congratulations again.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brown.
You notice the look on his face when you acknowledge me? Steve, you'll be missed sincerely. I, I think I'll tell a quick story about you and I, working for Meals on Wheels. Steve and I together did some work, and he didn't know that I was going to be there, and I didn't know he was going to be there. It was just a question of fact of what we were doing about giving back, and there was never any question about it, and it's something he's always done. And unfortunately, yes, our loss is someone else's gain, and he's had the benefit of a wonderful partner who I will continue to work with and look forward to it, and I'm sure he and I still, our paths will continue to cross. I will miss the eye contact. You have no idea how we would communicate just by looking at each other about certain subject matters because we started together when he first came to the city when I worked together a long time ago. You'll be missed, Steve. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember.
So Director, I just have to say, as a newer member of council, how much I appreciate it, and I know the other members of council have appreciated how quickly you've, you've sought to make sure that when folks are coming into these roles, that they better understand what's going on at the department and how that impacts people's lives out in the community. And in my short time here that we've had the opportunity to, to work together to echo some of the things that President Protem said, it's very clear to me where your heart is at when we're talking about how this impacts people. And I just want to say thank you for making sure that that's at the forefront of everything that you did for the city. And I think most importantly, as a fellow Bobcat, I'm disappointed in a sea of Buckeyes to be losing a Bobcat around City Hall. So just want to say thank you for the service.
You just took a deep breath. Why? So Steve wasn't my boss, but I had the occasion to work with Steve as an assistant city attorney by way of a phenomenal department that he has helped to shape and create. And I believe it's because of your leadership that we've got some of the best folks in those pivotal roles that service our residents in Columbus. And so I want to thank you for that. I know that you will be greatly missed. I appreciate your willingness to be, I'll say, amenable to my, my questions. I ask a lot of questions, but you have always been very accommodating with my team and myself as we went through this transitional period. I wish you nothing but success as you move on. Congratulations.
Well, when they first mentioned this resolution, I said, he's only been here for six years, and I, but then quickly your staff reminded me that in development years, they're like dog years. So, and I would say that's pretty apropos. So certainly, you know, from that first meeting that we had, probably a month or two into your tenure as a community leader, walking into the Beacon Building and meeting with you, I appreciated your, your vision, and I certainly appreciate your leadership as we've come full circle, and I'm now the Chair of Economic Development. And I know that, you know, when you think about where we were prior to you joining the administration, we've come a long way, and we have done so, not only is, is Columbus booming, and certainly the deals that we're putting together are, are, are really unseen in Columbus's history, what we're doing these days, but to take and develop policy that is mindful of affordable housing and good-paying jobs to, when we had nothing before, I think is so important, and there's really something to be very proud with how you're leaving this, this department. And certainly, we're going to miss you being over in, in one of our suburban neighbors, but it also gives us the opportunity to work together moving forward. And so, you know, I'm very appreciative of the time that you've, you've given to this role. It's, it's not a nine-to-five job by any stretch of the imagination, and I'm sure your family knows this better than anybody, so thank, again, thank you to them. I know how dedicated you are to your family and the time that you, I, I think you just did a mission trip just recently, which is admirable, and I, I know how much you glow when you talk about your, your sons. So we certainly appreciate all the dedication and time that you've given to the role and certainly are going to miss that, that moving forward, but we're only a phone call, text away, so thank you, Steve. Congratulations.
So Steve, I've probably known you on the stage, on this particular podium, longer than anyone up here, and have had the opportunity to work with you. One thing I would say that it's been really a pleasure to watch you juggle. You're one of the few directors that almost has the majority of council members to report to you in some capacity, and being able to work with us, understand each of us as individuals and what's important to us, and manage those relationships has been very interesting to watch you juggle that. And I think you've done a really great job of that because so many of our depart, all the, the areas from, think about housing to development, economic development, human services, and I can go on and on, part of zoning is there, it's just all different pieces, but how you have had to work with each of us and, again, to be able to be, to meet our needs. You're also someone that is always available. Anytime I call you, you call me back, and we are trying to work out whatever the issues are that may be. I appreciate the opportunity to have worked with you and certainly Director Collier Wiggman Scott on the Linden Project. It will certainly be one that will, will bring some more additional affordable housing to that community. We had to work a lot to, we worked together, got that done, and just appreciate that. I also appreciate the hard work your team put in and the initial funding for human services and, and that we created a competitive process for our nonprofits, and you've always been open to trying to help identify how do we begin to support more of them. We were, we were going to be talking about that more when you were leaving here, but that was the plan. But, and so I, I appreciate that you can have a conversation around, you know, economic development, but also have a conversation around individuals in our community who, who aren't thinking about economic development in the same way that we think about in terms of tax incentives, et cetera. So I appreciate the opportunity to work with there, and then just to talk about just life and how to make it better for our community. So I appreciate you. I wish you well in your new role. You certainly have earned, earned the position to go and to care for your community, what you live. I know that you always care about what we're doing here, and we certainly look forward to partnering with you because we know we have residents that are certainly, that are, that we're all going to continue to work together for the betterment of this region. So I really do appreciate you, and we'll certainly miss working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. I too just want to add my appreciation, Steve, for the work that you do on behalf of our residents. We've become closer over the last couple of years as we've talked a lot about transit and transit development, and the word that you taught me to come back to was equal equity and making equitable, making transit and built environment more equitable for folks. That's the spirit in which we should all be serving, and your leadership has not just rubbed off on this council, but certainly from here going forward is instilled in the department that you see behind you, that have come out and who, that you have built. And so on behalf of a grateful city and our many residents, we wish you all the best in Upper Arlington. It is not that far away, actually. It might even be on one of our corridors as we, near a corridor, but we look forward to just partnership, continued partnership with you. Before we adopt, would you, would you like to say?
Thank you, President Harden. Before I begin, could I get Mitch Brown's aide to come down? So. No, I'm serious. I'm absolutely serious. So one of the things I figured out about myself through this exit process is I'm completely unable to talk about individuals in this process without becoming emotional, so there is a note for each of you. So a couple of, start off with a couple of thanks. First of all, I would be incredibly remiss if I didn't thank both Mayor Coleman and Mayor Ginter for the honor to be able to do this job because it has been an honor, and both of them and their chiefs of staff, Mike Reese, Greg Davies, and Ken Paul, have been fantastic supports, and all those great things that were said about our accomplishments are not enabled without the support of two administrations that have really shared the same emphasis on moving all of our people forward. And that consistency and that support has been unwavering, and without them, it wouldn't have been possible. I also always believe we stand on the shoulders of our predecessors and want to acknowledge in particular Mark Barbash, Boy Safford, and Nikki Brandon, who a lot of, a lot has been said about the team, but I only assembled part of that team. And they, in particular Nikki, because of her role, both as interim director before I came on and as assistant director and HR manager before that, really kind of set the stage, so want to acknowledge them. I want to acknowledge the other folks around, sitting around me, too. This is a cabinet that all marches in the same direction, and we all have our roles, but we all know where we're headed. Where we're headed is the city, and we all know that the, the mission is bigger than any of our one departments. And some of that comes from the top, it comes from leadership from the mayor, but it takes individuals who sit in these chairs, understanding that we are here to do something bigger than our own departments. I want to thank the team. I have a team of about 180 folks, a fantastic leadership, leadership team, but I frequently talk about how they are my inspiration. The fact that they come in every day and give what they give makes my job easy. I want to thank this body collectively, and just as important as each of you, I frequently do it when I have an opportunity, but I want to take this opportunity and thank your staffs. You all are supported by great teams of very dedicated people who sometimes don't get the, the recognition that they deserve, and they make it very easy for us to do our jobs and make sure that you have the information that you need to really lead the city. And finally, my family's been mentioned a couple of times, but I would be deeply remiss if I didn't thank my wife Holly and, and my sons Jeffrey and Nate for, you know, putting up with me not being around on the occasional night or weekend, being offered the opportunity to attend community events with me, willingly or unwillingly. That's only going to get worse for them, I know that. And again, you know, finally, I guess I'd finish with thanking the residents for the, the honor to serve them. So, thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Councilmember.
Can, I have a very special request. Can we get one final dad joke?
Oh, my. See, no, now here's the issue, is you have been telling more dad jokes here than I have. So, but I don't have, you know, I don't have anything on the agenda tonight that gives me the opportunity to tell a dad joke. I think my, my homage to Mr. Wilkins in terms of handing out the, the things, and I will say, I, I do want to take a moment to, you know, thank the folks who come down and advocate, whether it's our commission members, whether it's folks like Nate who comes down and speaks on a regular basis about our issues. It's their passion for our city that kind of keeps us all going, so no more, no more dad jokes.
With that, I move for adoption. Is there a second? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Are there any comments by our elected officials? Madam Auditor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Director Shoney is a, is a true world-class public servant, and it's some of the best nights in council are nights like this. Congratulations. Just want to take a very quick moment to acknowledge this coming week is our bond sale, as you all know, and this week officially today, we're kicking off the Invest in Us campaign. And so over the next couple of days, you're going to be seeing some materials coming on digital media, social media, working with Finance Chair Liz Brown's office and the Council President's office to, to celebrate the ability for our citizens to, and residents to, to buy bonds directly from the city of Columbus. Right now, we have a really good group of participating brokerages, and we've tried to make this as simple as possible. We have just about 20 different firms, all of whom have, you know, banking offices established here in Columbus, that if you have an account, a checking account, a savings account, retirement account with these firms, you can easily buy a bond from the city of Columbus directly through them on what they call the primary market. So before it goes out to Wall Street, you can buy directly, and it's, it's a really splendid way for people who are interested in investing in the same, you know, frankly, recreation and parks facilities they play in, or the roads they drive on, and the water they drink every day, to invest in their city. So if you want any information, columbus.gov/buybonds. And over the next couple of days, I will send materials to each of your offices so you can talk about them as well. Thanks much.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. City attorneys, city treasurer. Seeing none, are there any other requests by members of council for removal of ordinance or resolution from the agenda? Seeing none, we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Well, the clerk now reading to the record ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation.
Finance Committee Ordinance 2294-2019, Public Safety Committee Ordinance 2391-2019, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2241, 2263, 2272, and 2292-2019, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 2350, 2376, and 2384-2019, Economic Development Committee Resolution 255X-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. We have no speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. The following ordinance now appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk read those into the record?
Finance Committee Ordinance is 2105, 2311, 2315, 2324, 2397, 2399-2019, Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2330 and 2335-2019, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 1860, 2110, and 2345-2019, Housing Committee Ordinance is 2367 and 2406-2019, Economic Development Committee Ordinance 2378-2019, Administration Committee Ordinance 2306-2019, Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 2230 and 2231-2019, and appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0, 151, 152, 154, and 155-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda, that's Mr. Nate Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins is speaking on ordinance 2406-2019.
First of all, let me say thank you to Steve Shoney and his devils moving on to Upper Arlington. He will be greatly well be missed. I'm really against CA 13, 2406, 2019, 436, 438, and 438 Avenue. I just want to know how long this property has been in the land bank and what it will be used for. But again, the reason why I'm against this property, I don't know how long that this property has been in the land bank and what it would be used for. And again, what I'm against, this property is not to be used for rental property, but some type of affordable housing for the multiple disability people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Looks like this is a conveyance of title on a parcel. Would you have the department please follow up? Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, maggot a motion for approval? Is there a second, second from Councilmember Tyson? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Consent portion of the agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Safety Committee. Councilmember Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, we have 2474, 2019, to authorize an appropriation of $250,000 within the wireless E911 fund, to authorize a transfer of $100,000 within the general fund, to authorize the Public Safety Director to modify a contract with Hexagon Safety and Infrastructure, formerly Integraf Corporation, for an upgrade to the city's computer aided dispatching system in accordance with the sole source procurement provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $350,000 from the general fund and wireless E911 fund, and to declare an emergency. I would also like to have Director Orth speak to the issue with regards to the current status of our computer aided dispatching system. Director Orth?
Good evening, President Harden, President Proten Brown, Chair Brown, members of council. This contract amendment will provide the city with the needed software and services to upgrade our computer aided dispatch, or CAD, system. CAD is used by, to dispatch police, fire, and emergency medical personnel to safety incidents citywide. The city's current CAD system is many years and several versions old. This upgrade will bring the city's CAD system to the current version, and more importantly, will result in additional features and improved system performance for public safety personnel. The project is planned to conclude in mid-2020, and your consideration of this ordinance is a vital step moving forward. On behalf of public safety and technology, thank you for your consideration of this important ordinance this evening.
Director Orth, thank you. If there are no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come for council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number 250X-2019, to declare the city's necessity and intent to appropriate and accept certain fee simple title and lesser real estate in order to complete the Urban Infrastructure Recovery Fund Sidewalks Improvements Project, and to declare an emergency. This project consists of seven separate areas, including Nelson Road North, Nelson Road South, Ellsworth Avenue, Hamlet Street, Kerr Street, Indianola, and Edgeville. Improvements completed under this ordinance include approximately 4,800 new ADA compliant sidewalks, installation of ADA compliant curb ramps, as well as minor relocation work. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next one is ordinance number 2301-2019, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of, Department, excuse me, of Public Service, Division of Infrastructure Management, to use the, to use Ohio Department of Transportation contracts and to issue purchase orders within Chloride Solutions LLC, EnviroTech Services Incorporated, Great Lakes Chloride Incorporated, K-Tech Specialty Coatings Incorporated, and Nature's Own Source LLC for de-icing chemicals for snow and ice control on the roadways of Columbus, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate ODOT contracting for de-icing chemicals to authorize the expenditure of up to $200,000 from the municipal motor vehicle tax fund, and declare an emergency. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to participate in the Department of Public Services' annual rodeo, where I was able to drive one of the snow trucks through a very tricky obstacle course. I believe I am the only person on this stage to ever have completed that obstacle course. I'm just saying. Even though today, we are just entering the first day of fall, the winter season is coming, I want to thank all of our snow warriors for the work they do during our winter months to keep our roads clear and safe. I'd also like to note that this ordinance includes a purchase for beet molasses, a natural additive that helps salt better stick to the pavement and increases the capacity to melt ice. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And last, we have ordinance number 2354-2019, to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the intersection improvements, State Route 161 North Service Road at Cleveland Avenue Project, and to declare an emergency. The city intends to make, improve, or repair certain public right-of-way by completing the intersection improvements of State Route 161 North Service Road at the Cleveland Avenue Project. Though the real estate acquisition in the area of the Northland Community Planning Area, the city will be able to fully execute those improvements, which will be open to the public without charge. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That is all my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Final committee to come before council is the Human, Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you. Of ordinance number 2273-2019, to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Nationwide Children's Hospital for the provision of five WIC clinics at their facilities, and to authorize expenditure of $654,840 from the Health Department Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. This program serves to safeguard the health of low-income pregnant, postpartum, and breastfeeding women, infants, and children up to age five, who are at nutritional risks by providing nutritious food, information on healthy eating, including breastfeeding promotion and support, and referrals to healthcare and other social services. Nationwide Children's Hospital WIC currently serves 4,114 women, infants, and children. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And my next ordinance is 2295-2019, to direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of $81,898 for the Cribs for Kids and Safe Sleep Program, to authorize the appropriation of $81,898 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. This project will work to reduce sleep-related infant deaths through the provision of safe sleep environments and safe sleep education. Over 250 cribs and safe sleep survival kits will be distributed. This program will also emphasize the importance of breastfeeding. This program will serve all of Franklin County, but have a primary focus on the geographic areas with the highest rates of infant mortality and populations of the highest need of this program. In 2018, a total of 1,658 portable cribs were distributed by Columbus Public Health and our partners. This funding also is for CPH to work at, at least, to work with at least 12 local businesses to provide breastfeeding education and the business case for the breastfeeding toolkit, and to facilitate the development of a work, of workplace policies for breastfeeding accommodation. Columbus Public Health will focus on businesses located within the priority neighborhoods. If you are individual or know of an individual who are needing of a crib, please call 614-645-3111. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seeing no further business coming for council, may I have a motion for adjournment? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. Regular meeting number 47 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve one. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you. If there are, see, before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to the speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side. We provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer. I will.
I will.
Thank you. First ordinance is 2279-2019, to amend ordinance number 1892-85, past September 23rd, 1985, for property located at 2677 Collingford Drive. By repealing Section 3 and replacing with a new Section 3, thereby modifying the limitation text as it pertains to setbacks, landscaping, and screening and signage, is really signage. This is a warrant to submit. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development, and the city department's recommendation is approval. The Far West Coalition's recommendation is also approval, 5 to 0. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Mend it.
Thank you. And now, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2280-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.18 Building Lines and 3376.04 Residential Complex Signs of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 2677 Collingford Drive, to permit reduced setbacks for a multi-unit residential development in the LARLD Limited Residential District. The applicant is Plains Rural Partners, III Limited, Care of Attorney Thomas Elhart. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the far northwest recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2340-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3325.801 Maximum Lot Coverage, 3325.805 Maximum Floor Area Ratio, 3332.05 Area District Lot Width Requirements, 3332.15 R4 Area District Requirements, 3332.19 Fronting, 3332.24 Rear Yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1374 North 5th Street, to permit two single-unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is David V. Coliguni. The proposed use is two single-unit dwellings on one lot. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the University Area Commission's recommendation is approval, 11 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And the final ordinance in council zoning is 2277-2019, to grant a variance for the provisions of Sections 3362.01 M Manufacturing Districts, 33.09.014A Height Districts, 3312.21A Landscaping and Screening, 3312.25 Maneuvering, 3312.29 Parking Space, 3312.49B Minimum Number of Parking Spaces Required, and 3312.53 Minimum Number of Loading Spaces Required of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 2400 Old Dublin Road, to permit mixed-use development with reduced development standards in the M Manufacturing District. The applicant is the Wagon Brenner Development Care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a mixed-use development. The city department's recommendation is disapproval, and the West Scioto's Commission's recommendation is disapproval, 4 to 4. Whenever there is a tie, it's a disapproval. And so, first, I'm going to ask for staff presentation.
Good evening. The site consists of a single parcel formerly used as part of a quarry operation that is owned in the M Manufacturing District. The request that council variance will permit a mixed-use development that includes 864 residential units and 80,500 square feet of commercial development. The request establishes five subareas with development standards proposed for each. Additionally, the request includes use restrictions that were requested by the West Scioto Area Commission to ensure that conflicting land uses would not occur within the proposed development. Variances for increased building height, reduced interior parking lot landscaping, loading space, and to prevent maneuvering and parking spaces over parcel lines are included in the request. A parking space reduction from 371 required spaces to 54 provided spaces is proposed for Subarea D. However, adjacent Subarea C contains an 88 parking space surplus. The site is within the planning area of the Trabee Roberts Area Plan, which recommends quarry for this location. It also states that reuse of quarry should be restored in a manner that is compatible with the community and maximizes recreational reuse potential where appropriate. Staff supports the proposed use of this site, but a project of this magnitude should be rezoned to an appropriate zoning district with a concurrent council variance application for standards variances. Similar redevelopments in nearby quarry sites have been rezoned to appropriate zoning districts in the past. These examples include Marble Cliff Crossing, a single-unit residential development zoned in 1996, located on the south side of Trabee Road, directly across from the site's access drive. Marble Cliff Commons Apartment Complex zoned in 1998, also located on the south side of Trabee Road and west of Marble Cliff Crossing. And the quarry apartments originally zoned in 1995, located on the north side of West 5th Avenue and east of McKinley Avenue. There is no justification for maintaining manufacturing zoning for such a large-scale, high-density residential and commercial development. Therefore, city department's recommendation is for disapproval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any question, are there any questions for the staff? All right. I'm going to ask for a presentation from the applicant or the representative of the Please state your name and who you represent.
President Tyson, or President Harden, Councilwoman Tyson, members of council. My name is Joe Reedy. I'm with Wagon Brenner Development.
Pull the mic up maybe a little bit more. Thank you.
I'm with Wagon Brenner Development, in addition to being their general counsel, most project manager for this. project manager for this project. The Marble Cliff Quarry is 600 acres. As indicated, it's north of Treby, east of Dublin, and west of the Scioto River. We are co-developing this land with the Columbus and Franklin County Metro Parks. We are building the roads, bridges, water, and sewer infrastructure that will be shared by the 20th Metro Park and our development as described by staff. We can't get the permits for the construction of this new infrastructure and the opening of the park without the requested zoning variance, which is tied to our site compliance plan. It was noted by staff that there's some other developments that have gone through formal zoning. We're a mixed-use development, not a one-use development like those other residential-only projects. And Columbus zoning code doesn't have a specific zoning category that fits this kind of development, hence the need for a variance. We would have to go through a variance process even if we applied for residential use development. We closed on the purchase of the property in February of last year. We first met with the neighborhood in April, and we've been meeting regularly with the neighborhood ever since. There have been a number of questions from the very first meeting with them about the traffic in the area. And the traffic on Treby Road and McKinley has been abysmal for decades. We did an initial traffic study focused on the first phase of our development, and that study showed the need for a new traffic signal at Lake Shore Drive and Treby, as well as turn lanes, and a new lane at the intersection of Route 33 and Cambridge or Treby Road in Upper Arlington. As reflected in the ordinance, we're committed to making those improvements as part of our development, and those will address the immediate traffic concerns that come with our project. But we also recognize the traffic issues are much broader and flowing from the questions from the neighborhood. We've committed to perform an additional regional traffic study, which we are paying 100% of. It's approximately $50,000, and it's going to cover additional intersections beyond the initial scope of our first traffic study. It will take into consideration other new developments that have come online and which we know impact traffic in the region. Moreover, we're aware that council is interested in completing a much broader comprehensive mobility study for the McKinley and Treby corridors, and we've committed to help funding that. We understand that traffic needs to be addressed sooner than later in this area. That's important for the existing uses as well as for our proposed project. When the community expressed concern over the potential for other uses under M like industrial, we specifically asked that language be included in the zoning ordinance restricting the other normal M uses from this so that we would not have anything that would detract from the residential component of this development. The adjacent Metropolitan Park land, which is going to be about 220 acres at this point, the existing quarry to the north will continue to operate for a while, but that 220 acres is currently zoned M, but because of the conservation easements on that land, it will never be used for industrial purposes. So our new development is protected from non-conforming uses to what we have proposed. So in some, we've worked closely with the neighborhood. We've listened to what they've asked for. We believe that our plan as proposed is important to the community because not only it provides much-needed housing, office, and other uses, but it also is critically necessary for the construction of this new park. The park doesn't happen without the infrastructure that we'll bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for the, for Mr. Reedy? I'm going to ask one question because it just something came to my just attention today, and I just want you to address this. I know that we have, as you mentioned, in terms of the Phase 1 of the traffic study, you've already committed to that. Phase 2 is the regional traffic study, and you've already, you know, committed to paying for that. And then also the multimodal comprehensive study certainly would be a public-private partnership. But something that was brought to my attention today that it hasn't come up in the past, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to address it if you can, and that was the issue around, there is, I guess, a Treby Bridge, and thinking about if we start the regional, excuse me, if we do the regional traffic study, and there is, I guess, a bridge that, that, it was said to me that this bridge, the way you would turn off of it, if it's going to have, I mean, I guess, a brick bridge, that it could be a safety issue. I hadn't heard it before. I mean, Mr. North mentioned it to me. Have you heard anything about, his concern, I'm just going to say, was, the concern really was if, you know, we do this work, and then we get to the multimodal comprehensive study, and that there needs to be a change, how would we address that?
Okay, President Harden, Councilwoman Tyson, I had not heard that concern previous to today.
I hadn't either.
And you've got a couple different issues, I think, that you've raised here. As far as design is concerned, and really as far as our regional traffic study is concerned, we, the MOU for it has had one set of review by City Traffic, Upper Arlington, and Franklin County, and the county controls the Treby Road Bridge over the Scioto River. So they're already actively involved in it. I believe there was a meeting today on this MOU, and Mr. Buck Schmitz here can probably address that. So I know that the various stakeholders associated with the design and the construction of our improvements are involved with what's going on there. But, but beyond that, you know, I don't know.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Councilmember.
Councilmember Dorans.
Yeah, can I ask a quick question? It's my understanding that what we have in front of us here this evening is different from what originally went before the area commission. I was wondering if you could speak to, speak to that and sort of the reasoning for it as far as breaking it up into, only bringing the phase here, the first phase here this evening.
Yes, and, and, President Harden, Councilmember Dorans, that is further, I think, reflection of how we are working with the community. We committed to just building the first phase of our project, which allows the infrastructure to be installed, allows the park to get opened, but because of the importance of understanding the regional traffic issues, this ordinance per our request limits us to the first phase only until that regional traffic study has been completed. And in that way, the community has a chance to further understand what's going on with traffic, and we have the opportunity to work together to address it. More importantly, is we've been working with the city's Department of Development on an expansion of an existing TIF district in the area, and with the revenues associated with the construction of our first phase, that will help provide a funding source as well as the preferred living development at McKinley and Treby. The goal would be to take tax dollars generated in that area and take the results of this regional traffic study and look to start moving forward with the construction of improvements sooner than later.
Thank you. Thank you. We have, we have one speaker who is against this variance, and it is Brian Turner. Good evening, Mr. Turner. Please state your name, and you have three minutes to share your comments.
I'm, my name is Brian Turner, and I am a Columbus resident and also the president of Marble Cliff Crossing Homeowners Association. And I thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and for addressing this. Now, our, our area is right immediately, it's off a lakeshore, and so it's right immediately across from the proposed entrance to the park and the Wagon Brenner Development. Some issues I want to bring forward are that we were told in July that it was very rare that the Columbus City Council would support zoning legislation introduced by a developer that was not supported, A, by the area commission, especially when the city's zoning staff recommends disapproval of the council variance request. In a letter dated May 30th, 2019, from Director Messer, zoning staff recommended disapproval of the council variance request from Wagon Brenner. Zoning staff stated there's no justification for maintaining manufacturing zoning for a high-density residential development. The letter also stated that the timing and the need for variances were not a hardship. On July 18th, the West Scioto Area Commission met to consider the Wagon Brenner variances. Over 100 residents packed the room. Residents spoke for well over an hour, and there was only one resident in the area that supported the variances. The area commission voted. The result, I believe, is a disapproval of the variances. We understand that the Wagon Brenner Development has agreed to provide a site compliance plan for future phases of the development. But really, why won't the developer provide a site plan for Phase 1? If the variances are approved, Wagon Brenner can actually increase the density beyond what has already been verbalized. City zoning has already described the development as a high, highly-density residential development. Our main concern is of safety, too. There's one main entrance into this for all of these people in the metro park. How about emergency vehicles? Wagon Brenner Development should not be allowed to circumvent the zoning process. Columbus has an appropriate zoning reclassifications, classification, sorry. An example, the 1,000-plus acre development at Polaris complied with all the Columbus PD and the CPD and other zoning classifications. As the zoning staff letter pointed out, other areas in the area of this development have also had to go through that. So city zoning staff recommended disapproval, the area commission recommended disapproval, and the area residents overwhelmingly voiced their objections to allowing Wagon Brenner to circumvent the zoning process. These are good reasons why Columbus has a very good zoning process. So we strongly encourage council members to vote no tonight to the council variance request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, for coming and sharing your comments. And now I will hear from Brian, Brian Endicott, who is the president of the West Scioto Area Good evening, Mr. Endicott.
Good evening. Council President Harden, Councilman Tim Brown, Zoning Chair Tyson, and fellow members of council. My name is Brian Endicott. I reside at 1411 Dixon Drive in Columbus. I am an elected member of the West Scioto Area Commission, and I serve as the commission's Zoning and Variance Committee Chair. Our zoning committee and commission held several public meetings through the spring and early summer with Wagon Brenner Development, with the overwhelming majority of time developed the traffic. The existing traffic is already heavily congested, as detailed with the developer's own initial traffic impact study, which showed multiple intersections as failing. On June 18th, as you've already heard, our commission met and heard a massive amount of community concerns over these traffic issues, and justifiably so. As a result, our commission split vote on a recommendation of this application, with four commissioners voting in favor of a recommendation and four commissioners voting against. A split vote yielded not recommended decision that remains the position of our area commission. We have an urgent traffic problem through the Treby Road corridor. The mixed-use quarry trials project includes a total of 850 units at completion and is not the only significant project within the corridor. A preferred living community on the southwest corner of McKinley and Treby is over 480 units. Also nearby are the Great Gateway Loss on Dublin Road with 270 units and Whispering Creek on Hague Avenue with another 188 units. And our commission is now reviewing another application, this one from Metro Development, for a 320-unit project on Treby Road. This total is nearly 2,000 new units within the Treby Road corridor, which already has several failing, several existing failing intersections. The four commissioners who voted in support of a recommendation noted some confidence in ongoing dialogues with city staff, city council, and the developer. Those conversations remain very fluid, and as a result of those dialogues, the ordinance does require an additional broader traffic, traffic impact study that Mr. Reedy previously alluded to this evening. However, the scope of this study is not yet determined, and our commission and our community desires some voice in finalizing the area to be studied. The ordinance refers to the site of the preferred living development, but to be effective, the study must go beyond that location. Also to be effective, Columbus City Council needs to commit to fully funding the traffic improvements that are recommended by the study. Ultimately, we need a comprehensive Treby Road, Renner Road corridor traffic study. Knowing the quarry trials project and other developments were on the horizon, our commission was forward-thinking and formally requested this corridor study to city council in April of 2018, nearly 18 months ago. Wagon Brenner has been an engaging and active partner and has committed to investments in moving traffic improvements forward. However, they are not the only developer with existing projects or pending applications throughout the corridor, and I am unaware of any investments other developers are making. Should this ordinance be approved tonight, we would like a commitment from council that developers with future applications show similar investments to improving traffic throughout the corridor. Ultimately, though, our commission's recommendation on this project has not changed. If this ordinance is approved, we respectfully request a voice in the scope of the additional traffic impact study, including holding public, public meetings for community feedbacks. Thank you, and I will take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Endicott. I'm now going to ask the applicant to come back and address some of the issues that were just discussed.
President Harden, Councilwoman Tyson, members of council. On the, Mr. Taylor, I believe, comments, I think much of my initial presentation addressed what we have done to address the neighborhood's concern and address the broader questions about traffic. The density of our project is such that we're maximizing the parkland and minimizing our development footprint. As I indicated, the surrounding park is 220 acres. We're donating 43 acres of riverfront to the metro park's land that could have been developed, and that's going to be a two-mile-long addition to the bike trail network of the city. And we're also committing to funding $2 million of the construction cost for that. So what we're doing is we're packing our development into a small footprint to maximize the green space in the surrounding areas. And in fact, our development is on And in fact, our development is on a former landfill. We purposely redeveloped the former landfill to leave the unimpacted areas as park. So we're trying to be good stewards of the land, and we're trying to be responsible in our development. As I already indicated, current Columbus zoning code does not have a specific zoning provision that fits our development. If it did, we'd be happy to use it. But this legislation includes our commitment to rezoning the property. That was, again, another request made by the neighborhood. Each of the things the neighborhood has requested has been baked into the zoning ordinance to address their concerns. On Mr. Endicott's comments, I completely agree with him that traffic is a mess there. Again, that's why we committed to doing the regional traffic study. Typically, we would not -- a developer would not be doing as broad a study as what we're doing here. We've worked closely with the traffic staff to design this study, and to his comment about the scope, to Mr. Endicott's comment about the scope, we provided a copy of our response to the city's questions on the scope and provided them with a copy of the MOU. We've sought to engage the neighborhood on the scope of this traffic study, and we welcome their comments.
Okay. One comment was about safety. Can you address that? I mean, it was one way in in regards to...
Oh, that's inaccurate. There are actually two ways in and out, or will be. So we'll be building a new road coming in off of Tribune. There is an existing publicly dedicated road called Old Dublin Road that comes down into the site. As we worked with the fire division, because the fire division would be looking for safety reasons, excuse me, at two ways in and out. And so the existing road, Old Dublin Road, was deemed adequate by fire for safety. Now, as part of our overall development, we will be repaving Old Dublin Road, and so it'll be a loop, essentially, where you could come in off of Tribune, go through our development, then turn to the west and go out Old Dublin Road. So there'll be two means of ingress and egress and a safe site.
Right. Thank you. Director Messer, do you want to make any comments about the issue of the zoning code?
Sure. Chair Tyson, President Harden, members of council. I think, as we said, you know, in general, our concern is that a project like this should be subject to a rezoning. Primarily, we have three main issues. One is without it going through rezoning, you avoid the development commission, which is a public process that allows members of the public to voice their support, and the development commission takes a vote, which all of you would have the advantage of. Number two, it avoids parkland dedication fees that are normally associated with rezoning. Number three, when you have a manufacturing district such as this, you now have a property that's residential that technically still is under the manufacturing zoning district. What that avoids is the protections that the residents of this residential development would gain in not having certain manufacturing being able to locate within a certain distance of their development. By not rezoning, you avoid that protection. What we have asked and what's been agreed to is that they would actually go through the rezoning process within a year, which pretty much alleviates all of those concerns. So there has been other Wagon Brenner projects that have gone through this process, and they have rezoned those per the commitment, and we're comfortable that that's likely to happen in this case. But we would, you know, firmly state that that needs to be upheld, and the rezoning needs to happen, because it will accomplish those other things that we mentioned. So while we don't support the variance, I think the fact that they're committing to rezoning the property within a year alleviates a lot of those concerns.
Thank you. And so the commitment has been made to rezon this property. That the rezoning would start -- well, they have a year to rezon it, but the goal is you're going to be -- you're going to have it rezoned before the end of the year. Is that correct?
Well, the ordinance calls for zoning within one year of the effective date of this legislation. Now, as a practical matter, we're looking to start construction of roads and other infrastructure yet this year. We've been delayed in starting our vertical construction until probably the end of the first quarter of next year, which means that our rezoning will be completed before our Phase One is even ready for occupancy.
I mean, so have you agreed to the filing of the rezoning by the end of the year?
By the end of this year.
That's what I have. You're saying a whole year, or you're going to file it by 2019, end of the 2019?
The legislation reads by the end of 20 -- well, within one year of today, right? Actually, I think this is effective 30 days after, because it was an emergency. But we are committed to rezoning, and we stand by that.
Okay. And this is something we all, as a body, are going to have to start to think about a number of things. One, we are now in a place where, in this city, we're dealing with density in a significant way, and density and traffic. Density and traffic. And as a body, and I've talked to Director Messer about this, is that we will need to be meeting with the -- and Councilman Brown, with the finance area, with the planning and zoning and development. There has to be a group meeting, because we are now coming up against significant development in our city, which we're excited that there -- that understanding what the growth we're going to have in our city, that there is -- there are a couple of issues with it. Density is one, and traffic is the other. And we will have to begin to figure this out. In this particular issue, I'm excited that, one, you have committed to, one, putting the dollars in to support the regional study, and, two, this is something that was very important to me, that there was the money for the $250,000 to support the multimodal study. Because if not, then it wouldn't be -- I cannot sit here and be supportive of legislation that would not first have that funding. But, two, the reason why I was saying it was going to be very important to have finance involved in all of this is because once you go down this path and we're hearing about traffic, that there has to be money in the CIB or the CIP to be able to be a partner to do these changes. That is going to be key. And there are significant other zonings that are either coming to this council, which will either mean that we hold them if we can't figure out a plan in terms of both of those two issues. Even though so, we are going to have to be, as a body with the administration and work with all the partners, to figure this out. So I'm happy that Wagon Brenner has stepped up and put money in, but now I'm past that. I'm now at the, you know, how do we get the roads built? And so, yes, I mean, so that is -- so that's just something that we're going to have to figure out as a city, because that is a significant concern. You have committed, I mean, it's a four-to-four vote, you have committed to this traffic And we've got to figure out how to make, once that's done, what does that happen? Because we do not want residents moving into places, having this beautiful development, and you can't ever get to it. People can't get home. So I do know that by the scope of this study for the regional study, it's supposed to be scoped out by September 30. Is that correct? Can these dates right?
I don't know what traffic schedule is for approving our scope. We responded to their comments, and Mr. Blexmith here, I believe that he met with others about our MOU and the traffic scope today, and I trust he would be able to tell you what his schedule is.
Daniel?
Yes, Councilmember Tyson. The meeting did occur with the other jurisdictions today to discuss the scope of that study, and there are just a few final comments provided by our department as well as the two other agencies. So I would anticipate within likely, probably the next couple of weeks, we should have a final document that all the agencies would be able to sign off on so that study can proceed.
And it is important that the real portion's been paid for this. You're paying for that portion, which is something that developers are going to start thinking about, how they participate in helping on some of these studies. And so I appreciate that that's happened. And then again, we have another one that we are saying will be a public-private partnership with the multimodal. So all commitments from Traffic Impact have been already agreed upon by the department and the applicant. Sanitary had no issues. Water has no issues. We're on Phase One of this development of 465 units of 864 total project. And then the Department of Recreation and Parks is basically saying that the future rezoning for this development will have parkland dedication ordinance requirement, excuse me, and that satisfies that major concern for the department. And we will have to begin to look at, you know, by the time this got to us, it's kind of gone through 80% of the process, and we need to figure out, that's why I'm going to have meetings now over these other zoning, upcoming zoning issues that are having significant amount of density and traffic, so that we're not at a place where we don't even want to move through the process this far if we know that we don't have more answers completed. So I'm going to ask, if any questions that you want to ask.
Thank you very much, Chair Tyson, and thank you for your leadership in this area. I want to echo some of the comments that she made. I mean, I think this is a great opportunity to put developers on notice, that I appreciate what you've done with the community. I know how hard, based on the reports that I've heard back, the development has made, the Wagon Brenner development company has made, to work with the neighborhoods. But I feel the frustrations that the neighborhoods have, you know, when it comes to this type of development. As president of the Northland Community Council back in those days, it just, you know, you sat there and you watched development after development being plucked into an area, traffic studies always coming out to the positive, and then realizing that after those come into the neighborhood, the traffic concerns were real, and they did cause problems. And so we do have to make a concerted effort in an area like you're speaking about, out in this area, that when multiple developers are coming in to develop an area and providing density, which we sorely need in the city of Columbus, that the needle is moved on traffic and that we are doing the projects concurrently instead of after the fact. And so, you know, we're working on the administration side and making sure that these things are -- the needles being moved, working with public service. I think last year was a good opportunity when we hired an urban planner within the public service department. But we're going to continue to be pushing back on developers to say, hey, we need to see more collaborative studies done like this, you know, the multimodal one and the regional one, because we have to be sure that we are not leaving communities in a bind when it comes to all this new development. So thank you for agreeing to step up to do that. We'll be expecting the other developers within the region to be doing the same thing, and that'll be kind of the standard down here from moving forward. And so I appreciate what you've done to make this happen so far.
Councilman Dorrance.
Just a quick question. So we've talked a lot about the traffic studies and why they're needed and for the different phases of these things, and I want to ask this question specifically to Mr. Endicott's point that I think he made a number of times, is once we get the results of what these traffic studies look back, I think this body would have an expectation that you all would be going back to the area commission to make sure that they're involved in that process as we look towards, whether it's a TIF or other types of funding for the city to alleviate that traffic. I just want to ask the question tonight whether or not you are committed to making sure as those studies wind down to make sure that they loop back in the area commission, because they are very, very critical for us to make sure that we have a body in that area that's working collaboratively with this council and with folks like you.
President Harden, Councilmember Dorrance, yes, we're committed to do that. We provided the results of our initial traffic study to the area commission for their review and consideration as part of this process, and we will do the same with the regional study.
Thank you. President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Tyson, and seriously thank you for your leadership on this one. This is tough, and many conversations dealing with density are tough conversations. I do want to be clear to the community, to developers, where I stand on density. I believe density is a good thing, and density will be the only way that we, as a community, solve some of our biggest issues. We're having a million people move to our community over the next 30 years. We're going to get closer to one another. But what Councilmember Tyson hit on, and I heard Councilmember Remy hit on, density without planning is an issue. And so we all have a responsibility to step up and to make sure that the planning does come in lockstep with the growth in these conversations that we're having. The reason why I think that -- I appreciate the leadership. I appreciate the developer Wagon Brenner, and I appreciate specifically, I really do appreciate the work that this area commission and civic association has done over the last year, because I think it has brought us closer together. To your point, we are not doing one traffic study. We're not doing two traffic studies, but we're doing three traffic studies. And that has to be taken into account. To your point, to Councilmember Tyson's point, the second and third traffic study are -- the second one is on your dime. The third one will be a public-private partnership. And Mr. Endicott brought up a good point. It should not just be on your shoulders, the Wagon Brenner shoulders. It should be on all those who are impacting the new residents that are coming to Tribune Road. And trust me, those conversations are happening right now, Mr. Endicott, with those other And the last thing I would say, and the reason why I lean toward favorable vote towards this, is that I believe that community engagement matters, and I think that your willingness, one, to go back out to the community throughout the next phases of this process is something that I trust will happen. I also, Councilmember Tyson also asked about the rezoning application. She asked it a couple of times. Yes, this legislation says by the end of next year. I think the request is that the zoning application be filed by the end of this year, and I think that that is something that is doable, and that would be the request that we would make. But we appreciate the hard work that has been put into this conversation and this work. We, like I said, more conversations like this are coming, and that working group that Councilmember Tyson talked about is, I think, meeting now to talk about these heavy densification conversations. You guys are just on the front end of it. But what you see, what you will see from this council is a willingness to work with folks, but a real determination, a real, real conversation about what comes next, the planning processes, and then the harder conversations about how we actually implement those next steps going forward. So thank you, Chair Tyson.
Councilmember Brown.
I'm a bit concerned here. We have a situation where the city staff has said disapproval, and we got a situation where the community is split. And here we are, a council trying to make a decision that is going to impact the lives of a lot of citizens in the city of Columbus. I will tell you frankly, I support the citizens. From my perspective, my answer will be no. We have a circumstance that we have to be conscientious that when our city staff tell us that they disapprove something, then it'll be up to you. No disrespect to Wagon Brenner, because I like them, but if they haven't convinced our city staff, guess what? You got a problem. And if they haven't convinced the citizens of the city of Columbus about a particular area about what they want to do, then it's not going to happen from my perspective. Thank you.
I'll add something to that, and I think that, and I know that this is something that Brian mentioned, there are going to be times that Brian mentioned, there are going to be times when, and we've seen it in this here, because overall, we also, for me personally, I have to look at what's going to be in the best interest of our city. So there are going to be times where the city has voted no, and when they voted no, we've voted yes, because I've asked questions about it. The only reason the city is voting no on it is because it's not a rezoning. It is a variance. It will be rezoned, and they've made that commitment. There are times when the city votes yes, and the residents vote no, and we decide, again, after listening, what is in the best interest. In this situation, we do have four-to-four, and because it's four-to-four, it's viewed as a decline. And the issue, though, is really around, and I get this, I'm not changing anybody's votes here, it's about the traffic. And we are trying to deal with the traffic situation. And so, an issue that, I mean, I, we're trying to balance it, because it's been a traffic issue, as Mr. Endicott stated, or someone mentioned, 18 months ago, someone asked about it. And so we've got to have a balance, because we got, you know, a million more people coming, where are they going, supposed to live, and we got to deal with traffic. And so do we deal with, and so this one is probably the best of our worlds to a degree, because we're trying to do them both. There are some coming down the pike that I'm not so sure that what's going to happen with that. Not this one, but there are some that we've got to figure out this all the way through. It's a different place for the city to be. It's a different place. So I, as I said, I've appreciated how you've worked together. I certainly have met with the Civic Association, and I know what the issues are, and we certainly shared, you know, what this public-private partnership would do moving forward. People coming after you is going to be a whole, it's going to be a little bit different, because it's all about money to make these changes occur. So Councilmember, Ms. Faber, Councilmember Faber has some comments, and then we'll, we'll take the vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Tyson, for all of the work that you and your office has done to get us to this point. You all have, have done a lot of work thus far, much of which was done before I was, joined city council. But with that in mind, I wholeheartedly believe if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And so my concerns are generally revolving around what is to come from the regional housing study and the multimodal housing study, and how we will be able to adjust as a city accordingly in order to adjust to whatever those recommendations might be. As chair of Housing Committee, I'm always thinking about affordable housing and housing in general. And so this project in particular does, calls me some pause, because I am really trying to figure out that how do we, how do we adjust accordingly with not just this Quarry Trails project, but the other projects that are going to be in the pipeline for that community? And if we don't have the right plan in place in order to adjust, how do we, how do we really represent our, our citizens to the best? And so with that being said, I truly do appreciate all the work that is done thus far, but having spent so much time working with the residents and just having some concerns about both of those studies not being done just yet, I will also, my vote will also be a no.
Councilmember Brown.
I'll just be very quick. I appreciate your leadership on this, Councilmember Tyson, and to push the question of traffic and to get the commitment of the, of the developer on that. I know that it is a deep concern for the residents, and to, I don't want to reprise what Council President Harden said, because he said it well about density. And the bottom line is, we've got to put our foot on the gas, so to speak, of this traffic conversation, so that, you know, we aren't in the position that the residents are begging us, you know, at a new, at a new project. So that's really, I'm in favor of the project, I'm going to vote for the project, but that's really has to be our commitment here tonight, is, in these, there are a couple of these corridors in our city where traffic is, is, is an extra headache, right? No one likes rush hour, but it's more than that, and we want you to know that we see it as more than that, and, and we've got to do a better job of getting out in front of it.
Councilmember Brown, I think that, and I've said this to Director Messer, I said to Director Shoney, who was here, look, there's got to be more conversations from the administration about what's happening in our community, that density and traffic and how to deal with it. Because once it gets to us, we either have to either not put it on the agenda and people are moving it forward, and that's why I said I'm having meetings, as said to Director Messer earlier in the week, we've got to come together on this, because it is, we've got, not that people aren't planning, but it is, we've got to put this in a, you know, in a trajectory of getting this done, because lots of projects, people are excited about that, but we've got to solve some issues here. So if there are no more comments, I am going to move for passage by voice vote.
Is there a second? Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorns? Ms. Faber? Mr. Reamie? Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, we had, I'm sorry, they hadn't, we moved to, first of all, I move to reconsider by voice.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Please call the roll by voice to reconsider.
Brown, Ms. Brown, Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorns? Ms. Faber? Mr. Reamie? Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, reconsider.
Now, I move to amend, as submitted to the clerk.
Please call the roll.
My voice.
My voice, please.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorns? Ms. Faber? Mr. Reamie? Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, amended.
And now I move for passage by voice.
Is there a second? Please call the roll.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorns? Ms. Faber? Mr. Reamie? Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. That's all we have, zoning this evening.
Seeing no further business to come for the zoning committee, may I have a, a, thank you. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorns, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
I'm going to close.